Okay, we were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 6, 2013, and I'd ask that you please rise if able for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the Batavia City Council meets in regular session, we are most thankful for a number of things, but tonight, we want to specifically recognize all those who are leaving our city council after what has been thousands of hours of combined service on their parts in so many venues and so many good causes that have served citizens of Batavia both today and in the future. Equally, we are proud tonight of the new people who are to assume office, and we are thankful for their enthusiasm and their desire to serve and their willingness to step forward and help decide the events of Batavia's future. And we are ever mindful that we are all here for just brief periods of time of Batavia's history, and that each and every one of us comes here with the sole desire and goal to do the best we can for the future generations of our town and to make Batavia a very proud and vibrant place where we can leave future generations something to be proud of. Tonight, as always, we want to always remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those serving with them as they carry forth their most necessary duties. Tonight, we also ask for guidance and understanding and vision as we make the decisions we force, and we just conclude by, again, acknowledging what a great and wondrous place the community of Batavia has become, thanks to the leadership of all those who have served and continue to serve to make this a great and grand place to proudly call home. Amen. Alderman Freindahl, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, could please call the roll?
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanzet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Deets?
Here.
Jungles?
Here.
Volk?
Here.
Fryendall?
Here.
Leva?
Here.
Tanuda?
Here.
The record reflects that all fourteen elected members of the City Council are present in the counterforce and have obviously the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda, and Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one change to the agenda. We are removing item number ten, a presentation for crime-free rental housing program. With that change made, I move that we accept the agenda as changed.
Second, moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Deets for the approval of the agenda as changed. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Deets?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Fryendall?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to item number five, which is a presentation of the consent agenda, and Alderman Deets, would you like to present this tonight?
Thank you, Your Honor. It is proposed that we accept and place on file the planned commission minutes for April 3, 2013, the government services committee minutes for February 11, 2013, the public utilities committee minutes for March 26, 2013. It is proposed that we approve the April 26, 2013 payroll in the amount of $706,508.33. The May 3, 2013 payables in the amount of $3,965,415.70. It is further proposed that we approve the City Council minutes for April 1 and 15 of 2013 and the following resolutions. Resolution 13-61-R, awarding contract for wastewater treatment facility improvements to Manusso's General Contracting, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $838,768. Resolution 13-62-R, awarding a contract for diffuser membrane replacement to Hayes Mechanical for an amount not to exceed $60,733.14. Resolution 13-59-R, authorizing task order number five with HBK Engineering for American Can Substation Demolition and Restoration Engineering Services for an amount not to exceed $27,320. Resolution 13-64-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Denler Incorporated for the 2013 crack sealing program in the amount of $50,000. Resolution 13-67-R, authorization to purchase a Falcon hot patching trailer through the Illinois Joint Purchasing Program from Falva Road Equipment, LLC in the amount of $23,141. Resolution 13-53-R, accepting the quitclaim deed for Lot 37 in Beech and Dills Fox Trail South Unit 1 subdivision. And finally, resolution 13-56-R, accepting the quitclaim deed for a parcel on South River Street. Having so said, Your Honor, I move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman Deets, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? I just would like to make one notation on item oh, which is resolution 13-56-R, which is the accepting of the quitclaim deed for the parcel on South River Street, and when that was read at the committee, it got some eyebrows raised because the quitclaim deed was signed by myself, and folks wondered what I was quitclaiming to the city of Batavia and what this, for no price, I might add, I'm making this a donation, but this represents some, I'm a sixth generation of my family to live in Batavia, and this represents a piece of land that is ten feet long and five feet wide, I think, it's about fifty feet, and it sits on the alley down right off of South River Street, just south of Wilson Street, and it was the back driveway to my great-grandfather's general store that he used to have at the corner of River and Wilson. And as near as I could tell, he accepted that or bought the property or was a partner in buying the property in 1880. So it's been, this piece of land has been in my family for 133 years, which I think makes it one of the longest holdings in Batavia, I think maybe the only one that may see that is the Condi family up on North Washington Avenue, and they've been up at the corner of Washington and Spring since 1849, which makes that 164 years of age in one family. So can't, that's probably a record that will never be broke, but I just thought I would, because some eyebrows got raised and my name got mentioned as doing a quitclaim deed, and I just wanted everybody to know it was a donation for a piece of land that had no use to nobody except probably to the city and redevelopment of the corner at River and Wilson, so I just wanted to clear the air on that. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Deets?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Fryendall?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving then right along to item number six, which is a presentation tonight by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Roger Brice. Welcome, Mr. Brice.
Thank you, Your Honor. Rather than introducing a business to you tonight, I'd like to use this occasion to just address a few comments, if I might. For the first time in recent memory, there will be the oath administered to six new members of the City Council. So I wish to begin by sincerely thanking the six of you who are leaving the council this evening. Together, you have given more than 74 years and tens of thousands of hours of service to the citizens of this fair community. Each of you have made your mark in a very positive way. We are far better for having had you in those seats. Janet and Dawn, during your tenure, the city began in earnest to rebuild our downtown and make it a more friendly and welcoming place for us to gather. Vic, you have been the voice of conservatism on this council. You have spoken loudly and in good faith. That voice certainly needs to be continued on this body. Bob, you've spoken eloquently for the underdog and the environmentalist in each of us. I hope your voice too will be maintained as the council is reformulated. But finally, I offer my most sincere gratitude to Eldon and Jim. Together, you have given this community more than half a century of dedication, wisdom, and creativity. As you both know, history will write the final chapters of your tenure on this august body, but having been here for so many hundreds of hours of deliberation, I can only say that the citizens are clearly in your debt. The community is far better for your time on this council. But now, if I may, a few remarks for the soon-to-be reformulated council. The change in membership in the council may or may not be historic in Batavia's 180-year history, but what is historic is that the Chamber of Commerce accounts for more economic activity than any time in our 60-year history. Our 300-plus members employ thousands of local citizens and manage millions of square feet of commercial, residential, and industrial space. Our voice on behalf of Commerce includes the most senior manager at hundreds of facilities from west of Randall to east of Kirk. With the formation of our new industrial site managers forum, the Chamber will soon reach deeply into the core of local industry. Many of these companies are global leaders in their markets and ship over a billion dollars of product from our backyard to the four corners of the globe. The business owners and managers that comprise the Chamber know intimately that their future is intertwined with that of the broader community. Their decisions are impacted by those you will make, and your success will be enhanced or tempered by the decisions that they make. These experienced and capable business leaders care about your vision and actions and are hopeful that you will care about theirs. The Chamber and the city, both staff and elected officials, have long enjoyed a practical and fruitful working relationship. Even on those occasions when we have differed, we have acted as partners in the city's future. We are hopeful that with the new complexion of the council that our partnership will continue and strengthen. The Chamber represents a broad spectrum of business and community interests, and as a result, we should be actively engaged when new directions and critical decisions first emerge. Because of our shared destiny and the Chamber's influential voice, we hope you will be proactive in consulting the Chamber and its membership as you conceive of a new future for Batavia. All of our decisions, those of the city and of our members, can only be enhanced by clear communication, rich debate, and straightforward conversation. So again, congratulations. Congratulations to the mayor and the seven recently elected members of the council. Congratulations to the council on your past success. And congratulations in advance for helping us create a partnership that will enable the citizens of Batavia to better envision and build a dynamic community and move together into a future with great promise. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to item number seven, which is an employee recognition and retirement of Felix Bowlen after 23. Felix, are you in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Could you come up and join me at the podium for a second? Certainly, on behalf of the city of Batavia, I just want to specifically recognize Felix for his, always what I would describe as his hands-on work in Batavia. He was a person that, he knew all the little details, I can attest to, and many times when I saw him at work, whether it was making sure that the sewer lid was back on or that the curbing had been swept up properly or that the snow had been taken back as far as it could possibly go, he paid a lot of attention to a lot of little details, and he, I think, was an inspiration to a lot of folks who are aspiring to become workers at Public Works because he kind of showed a lot of guys how to do it the right way. So Felix, on behalf of the city of Batavia, I'd like to present to you the following plaque, which reads Felix Bowlen, an appreciation of 23 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia and the Public Works Division from September 23, 1990, to April 22, 2013. So on behalf of the people of Batavia.
I just wanted to reiterate the thank yous. You're a resident of Batavia. You chose for your career for 23 years to serve the citizens of Batavia, and certainly on behalf of the department and the city, I want to say thank you for your dedication. Really, it means a lot to serve the city, so really, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Bike Month, and who has that? Well, no, we need somebody to read it for us. Alderman Deets, if you would be so kind, please. You got it? You don't have it?
I don't have the copy.
Pass one down.
Here it goes.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the works they perform, now therefore, I, Jeffrey DeShioki, Mayor of the city of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the city of Batavia. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this 20th day of May, 2013.
We had a, apparently, we had a little misdirection here. Here.
That's a fine proclamation, but I don't think it's germane to the order of business on the floor. All right, let's try this one. Proclamation. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of fitness and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the League of American Bicyclists and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all, now therefore, I, Jeffrey DeShioki, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May, 2013, as Bike Month throughout the city and encourage all Batavians to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways. Signed, Jeffrey DeShioki, Mayor. Your Honor, I move the bicycle proclamation.
Second. Moved by Alderman Deets, second by Alderman, who was it?
Leva.
Leva, for the approval of the Bicycle Month. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Deets?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Fryendall?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Our original plan was to have John Gamble, who is the chairman of the Batavia Bike Commission, here with us this evening to accept this and make some brief comments. Unfortunately, John had a success, I'll describe it as a successful encounter with the Batavia Fire Department Rescue Squad this past weekend, and he's recovering, so I am told, and doing a nice job, but unfortunately, he couldn't make the meeting here tonight, so Joan Spitz from the Bike Commission is here, and Joan, if you would, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you. John Gamble wanted me to tell you that he did not have a heart attack, and he has emailed me all day about the Bike Commission, so he must be doing okay, and he said clearly he would not be here if it wasn't for the two firemen from Batavia that he was with. They saved his life. I'm Joanne Spitz. I joined the commission with John Gamble four years ago because Lisa Clark asked me to, and I think it's a three-year term, and I'm going on my fifth. They won't accept my resignation, no. Bike Week, we are, Batavia's doing Bike Week, May 13th to the 18th, and I passed out some information that we wanted to share with you. Monday morning on the 13th, we're offering coffee and bagels at Panera from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. for bikers going to work. Tuesday, we are hoping that the council, some of the council people, new or old, will sponsor a ride around Batavia. Lisa Clark is helping me organize that. We'd meet here at City Hall at 5:30 and do a short ride around Batavia that John was helping to organize, and we will continue to work on that. So if you can do it, it'd be great, and spread the word to your neighbors and constituents. Thursday, we're sponsoring a ride to the Cougars, meeting here and all riding together with helmets and lights. Friday night, we are sponsoring a movie about bicycle, a bicycle-oriented movie at the Peg Bond Center, and Saturday, we are going to have a bike corral at Cocktails in the Park. So we're working really hard to make biking safer. Wednesday is National Bike and Walk to School Day. We are hopefully going to have some police and firemen at the elementary schools and the middle school. We're handing out stickers and encouraging students to ride or walk to school. We are also working on a bicycle-friendly community application with the American League of Bicyclists. It's a very difficult thing to accomplish, there's three levels, and we're doing our best to get on the radar, and we've been able to work with lots of different groups in Batavia, from the Chamber to Main Street, the Park District, and the city. We also work at the Farmer's Market Boost, we have bike corrals at local events, we are involved with the Green Walk, and we are working to get more signage and road markings in Batavia. So that's what we're doing. And because I'm in the spotlight right now, I just want to tell you that I am also the chairperson of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence, and I don't want to step on the Chamber's golf outing because I know that you're all involved in that, but we also have one, and so if anybody wants to golf a second time, we have a golf outing on Monday, June 24th. Thank you.
As we just said, on behalf of the City Council, we thought a week wasn't long enough to honor the bicycles, so we gave you the whole month. So here, on behalf of the City Council, the proclamation, we're claiming the whole month of May is Bicycle Month. Thank you, and all the members of the commission, for all the great things you're doing. Okay, next up, item number nine, it was a presentation by BATV's Holly Dykman. Holly?
Hello, Mayor. Members of the City Council, thank you for giving me a few minutes today. My name is Holly Deichman. I'm the station manager at Batavia Access Television. I'm here to represent, I'm one representative of a huge group of volunteers that bring you community television and some transparency within the city of Batavia. We are very thankful for the support of all of the outgoing and current members of the City Council for all of your support. If it wasn't for your support, we would not be able to function, so thank you very much for your commitment to us over the years. BATV, I am one paid employee, we have one other full-time paid employee and a part-time employee, John, who's here with you tonight and who broadcasts all of the City Council meetings live. We couldn't do and bring to you what we do in this community without the many volunteers. We start off with the volunteer board of directors, there's 11-member board of directors for BATV, then there's staff, then we have interns and volunteers that really bring the programming to light within our community. We operate two stations, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm passing around to you now a card that talks about one of our newest programs that we're developing in the community called Out on the Town. On the back of that card, it does show all the ways that you can find us on social media. We post a lot of our videos up on YouTube, including City Council meetings, and archive a lot of what's going on in the community, so please like us and follow us. Hopefully, that'll be a good communication tool for you moving forward and staying connected with the city of Batavia. Tonight, I would like to recognize some of the volunteers that we've had from our board of directors and also from our community that does support us by providing programming. I came to you last year about this time with the development of a new award that we came up with for our volunteers called the Barb Mabs Volunteer of the Year Award. It was established to recognize the efforts of the many volunteers that show tireless commitment to our organization. This year, we decided to recognize two individuals who often volunteer as a team within our community. You may recognize them as the voices of Bulldog Sports. Here's some stats that one of them shared on Facebook recently. BATV broadcast number 150 in the books. By the numbers, overall Batavia record, 88 and 62. Total boys' basketball games, 81. Total girls' basketball games, 11. Total football games, 56. Total baseball games, 2. Games in Batavia, 109. Games on the road, 37. The two gentlemen that I am going to bring up to the podium now have not only themselves tirelessly showed their support for sports and other community events, but also, you know, as one of them often responds, says that they're during the sporting seasons, unfortunately, their wife is a BATV widow. So that does show some of the commitment that they give to us, but I'd like to recognize Alan Wolfe and Dave Lombard.
Just want to say thank you to Holly and all of the members of BATV. They've really become a second family to me over the past six years. I spend a lot of my weekends with them, and wouldn't be possible without them. Probably the first day I volunteered at BATV, I was made aware of the legend of Barb Mab, so it's definitely an honor to receive something that bears her name. Most thanks go to this guy right here, Alan Wolfe, who kind of brought me into this role and went along for the ride for six years, so it's been a great experience. Hopefully, you've all been able to enjoy some BATV broadcasts, and if not, invite you to tune in, we're only about 115 days till football.
I'll start off by giving thanks to Jim Volk, who about eight years ago asked me if I could fill in for him for a game out at the high school, and things were a lot different then, very much so. I don't think we had ever done a live game, and from there, we went into live football. We learned really what it was like to do a live production in interesting weather through construction seasons out at the high school, on the road, doing our first webcasts. Really been a lot of fun. I wouldn't give up a minute of the time that we spent to do all that. I really look forward to the future in doing it, and I would encourage anybody that would like to take a turn behind the camera in front of it, come on out to BATV, we'll find something for you to do. Thank you.
And two other members that unfortunately have recently decided to leave our board of directors, as I said, touched on earlier, we have an 11-member volunteer board of directors, so I would like to ask Kermit Carlson and Craig Foltos to come up to the podium, please. So I really like these guys very much, not only because they chose to keep me on as the station manager after my first short period of time there and the decision that they made to give me a job, so first of all, thank you very much for that. But for Kermit, I'd like to just read what we had inscribed on here. Dedicated nearly seven years of his time as a volunteer member of the BATV Board of Directors, including a term as board president. The BATV board and staff would like to thank Kermit for his countless hours countless hours of community service through his commitment to high-quality public television. In addition to that, I would just like to say that these two gentlemen, in summary, and along with Alan and Dave, really have not only shown me and this community what the true meaning of volunteerism, but they also show their children. And that, to me, means a lot. They're showing day after day of how much time that they give to us, that as an example to their children, and we hope fosters continued commitment to this community as well. So thank you to Kermit.
Thank you very much, Holly, and I'd also like to thank all my colleagues at BATV. It's been a wonderful eight years, and the staff, and especially the Board of Directors, but also the volunteers who make up the core of BATV, and the great amount of Batavia that we've been able to bring to the TV screen, which is really a remarkable change from most communities, where actually cable TV is languished along with community access. And Batavia has an organization that actually has transcended the somewhat shifting sands of media and has adapted. It acts as a mirror for the community, not only at the airing of all of the community's various governmental body meetings, but also the churches and the civic organizations that participate and are part of the community through BATV. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the council for their support in supporting BATV and making it part of Batavia. Thank you very much.
And though our board members are often kind of held off to meetings with just staff, they really are the policymakers for BATV, and I follow in their guidance. So the many years that both Kermit and Craig have committed to our board really reflected in our current programming and what we've been able to accomplish over the last several years. But in regards to Craig Foltos, he dedicated nearly 15 years of his time as a volunteer member of the BATV Board of Directors. He shared with us countless hours of local programming, endless ideas for future programming, and his lifelong passion for this community. Craig continues to be a champion of public access television in our community. So I'd like to present this to Craig Foltos.
Before there was a BATV, there was Bill McGrath and I, and we took a access programming class out on Wilson Street, and we both had a couple ideas that, boy, this could be nice. And we said, maybe we could start doing some stuff together. And through Bill's support, and Mayor Shelkey's support, and the City Council's support, we've been able to broadcast these meetings, which are outstanding. 'Cause what makes our community great is, as Mayor Shelkey spoke so eloquently, is the involvement of the people. And so many people don't come to meetings, and how they find out about meetings is through the press and through BATV. So it's just a worthwhile cause. And as Jim Volk said, who used to be our president of the group, when we would interview people, when we interviewed Holly, "If you don't get the job, we'd still like to see you around here. So even though you don't have a job there, we'd still like to see you around." And I have a barber shop down the street if you're bored and you wanna shop local. Okay, thank you.
And last but not least, thank you so much for all of your time. But one last thing, just about, it'll be two years in August, BATV was fortunate enough to upgrade our studio, control room, and everything, our whole facility at Batavia High School. Again, the support of the community through our franchise agreement and the City Council. We decided at that point in time that we wanted to change, we didn't really have a name. We were BATV Studios. We were the high school inside, or we were the studio inside of Batavia High School. So we decided with the retirement of Craig from our board that we were going to officially name our studios the Foltos Studios. So we're gonna be proudly displaying this outside of our studios inside of Batavia High School, but I just wanted to share this all with you tonight, and again, say a huge thanks to Craig for being a champion of community-focused television in Batavia.
Well, thank you, and I spent six years going to high school out there, so I really appreciate it.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Holly, and congratulations to each and every one of the folks that was recognized. Everybody there was obviously a well-known worker and gift to the community of Batavia, and the careers that were recognized tonight, I think, are a very special tribute to some of the unique people that really make Batavia, life in Batavia a very special place. So thanks again to each and every one of you. Moving to item number 10, which has been postponed to a future meeting, we will then skip to item number 11, which is ordinance 13-23, an ordinance accepting bond order and confirmation of sale of general obligation refinancing bonds, Series 2013, in the city of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties, Illinois, and amending and superseding a certain previous ordinance. Alderman Sparks, you have that one?
Next one, too. Thank you, Your Honor. What this ordinance does, we passed an ordinance 13-7, and there was a technical error in the definition of a bond year, the bond year. So what this is doing is it's amending that ordinance. What this ordinance does is it accepts the bond order and confirming, confirming sale of general obligation refunding bond, Series 2013, in the city of Batavia, Canton, DuPage Counties. It amends and supersedes a certain previous ordinance that was approved by us earlier. And what this will do is that the closing of the bonds will be on May 8th, and the savings we will show by doing this on interest in the loan refunding is $285,519.84. The present value savings is $299,517.4. With that read, I move that we accept ordinance 13-23.
Second. By Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Dietz, for the approval of ordinance 13-23. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Dietz?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Freidendahl?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Ordinance 13-23 is approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving then to item number 12, which is ordinance 13-24, authorizing alcohol sales and consumption on certain city property at certain times in conjunction with authorized and issued liquor licenses pursuant to Title III, Chapter III of the Batavia Municipal Code. Who's got this one? Alderman Sparks?
Thank you. All this is doing is adding a line into our liquor ordinance that, under item B, City Hall, it's also including the Albright Theater, the third floor of this building. That came around by, we have a liquor license holders who's negotiating arrangement with the Albright Theater where they can put together dinner theater packages and serve wine at these. And I think it's a good idea to improve anything we've got here in town. This gentleman that's doing this is also going to be putting some of that money back into the Albright Theater. So it's a win-win situation for everybody involved. So I move that we approve ordinance 13-24, adding the Albright Theater to the list of city properties at which alcohol may be served.
Second. By Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Dietz, for the approval of ordinance 13-24, the authorization of alcohol and consumption on certain city property. Any discussion? Alderman Dietz?
Your Honor, I'm happy to support this ordinance. I would like the citizens to know that to the very best of our ability, we have constructed the agreement in such a way that the city does not come into the chain of liability exposure here. And we do that by contract, and we do that by insurance policy endorsement on the part of the liquor license holder. And we rely on our corporate counsel to make sure that it goes the way we want it to go. So we've done everything we can to protect the citizens and the assets of the city while we are attempting to expand the entertainment offerings within the city. I'm happy to support the measure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Kirk, please call the roll then, in ordinance 13-24.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Dietz?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Freidendahl?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Ordinance 13-24 is approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to item number 13 then, which is Resolution 13-60-R, authorizing certain elected city officials and staff to receive confidential information related to the Prairie State project. Alderman Freidendahl, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll try to make this brief. It's a several-page memo. But in 2006, the city executed a power sales agreement with NIPA to purchase power, which proposed to be from the Prairie State project. In 2007, the city granted final approval for NIPA to issue bonds in participation in the project. NIPA subsequently executed several different project agreements, including the participation agreement. In that participation agreement, it also required the transmittal of confidential information to other participant representatives. Up until this point, the confidential information consisted of summarizing monthly reports, which were transmitted via client, or attorney-client privileges, communications to the NIPA member community. At the urging of Batavia, an additional detailed confidential documents will be now available to each community representative. In order to receive the additional information, representatives will be required to execute a confidential agreement as specified by this participation agreement. What that means is that anybody that is to receive the confidential agreement, or the confidential reports coming out from NIPA, which will include the mayor, the city clerk, the city council, city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, public works director, finance director, and superintendent of electric, will be required to sign a confidentiality agreement. As I explained, as being a NIPA representative for several years, I was privileged to some confidentiality reports, and I was privileged to see many reports that weren't confidential. After several years of reading the two kinds of reports and trying to keep them sorted in your mind, they all became a blur. What was confidential and what was not confidential was very difficult to keep sorted out. So I urge everyone that wants the confidential reports to sign the agreement, but realize that the responsibility is very strict by this confidentiality agreement. I will say that it is going to be easier to, or there will be less confidential information coming out than there was in the past, because while Bechtel was still on the project as the builder, many things that Bechtel reported on were very strict and confidential. The building of power plants is sort of a build-as-you-go, with newer technologies being added here and there. And these technologies mean several thousand dollars and maybe millions of dollars in benefits to the builders. So Bechtel was very strict on what came out as, on the non-confidential side of things. I urge the passing of Resolution 13-60-R, authorizing certain elected officials and city staff to receive confidential information relating to Prairie States with the signature on the confidentiality agreement. So move.
Second. By Alderman Freidendahl, second by Alderman Clark, for the approval of Resolution 13-60-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Freidendahl?
Aye.
Leva?
Aye.
Tanuda?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolfe?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Dietz?
Aye.
Jungles?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. All right, as you can see, we've reached the end of the business agenda for the current City Council, but before we adjourn, we would like to take a few moments to recognize everybody that's leaving us tonight. And we've got a plaque for each and every one of them here that we would like to present. But I'd like to just take a few minutes and just make a few comments, and then allow each one of the aldermen who's leaving, if they would like to say something, we'll allow that. So I'm gonna start, I've tried to organize this by the order of seniority. And obviously, there's the king of seniority on the history of the Batavia City Council is here in the person of Alderman Freidendahl, 'cause tonight, he marks his completion of his 32nd year as an alderman in the city of Batavia, which makes him the longest-serving alderman in the history of the city of Batavia. So that is a significant achievement, not only from our history, but for its commitment to our community. As most of you know, I was also elected at the same time Alderman Freidendahl was first elected. And I have very fond memories of that, because I think the second meeting we had, and we weren't in this building at the time, we were still in the old U.S. Wind Engine and Pump Company Appleton Building that was across the street. It was kind of a shared windmill factory at one point in time, so I use both names. But we were having a meeting, and all of a sudden, about the second item in the agenda, a great big rat ran right across the floor. And somebody in the City Council says, "Well, this is a bad sign. The rats are leaving the building." And I think I made the comment, I said, "No, they're probably upset, because the good guys have arrived." Well, at the end of the day, Alderman Freidendahl walks out of here tonight, and I think he should hold his head extremely high, because of the many years that I think you started on the Utilities Committee in your first term. You've served as chairman longer than anybody else has ever served as chairman of the Utilities Committee. And another thing I can tell you about 1982, we used to have about an 85-foot high-rise tower right out here in the front of the City Hall, which was the electrical connection service that ran right through downtown Batavia. And every now and then, a chunk of it would short out, and there'd be this big flash. And then there was another small electrical substation up on North Water Street, where Waterford on the Fox now has the nice townhouses. And the two of them would kind of blow up in tandem. And first, this one would blow off, and then that one would blow up, and it would make a lot of noise, and then suddenly, all the lights would go off. And so that was one of the early days of the electrical utility. Then we have done a lot of things with that utility, including hooking it up to the national grid. And I think one of the things that Alderman Freidendahl holds a great degree of pride is that last year, the Chicago Sun-Times rated the reliability of the Batavia Electrical Utility the best in the suburban Chicago area. And so there's a lot to be said for what's been accomplished, not only in the electric, but certainly in the water, where we spent over $26 million on taking the radium problems out of the Batavia water, and basically building a new water treatment system for domestic water in our community. And I don't know, it's been two or three expansions and renditions, remodeling on the White's Water Treatment Plan on South Shumway Avenue, that again have taken place under Alderman Freidendahl's leadership. So Eldon, there's a lot for this community to thank you about tonight. And I just wanna say that we really appreciate all that you've done to really, truly make a difference in the utilities of our community. Would you like to make some comments?
I would like to comment that I couldn't have done it without the support of the entire council and the staff that we have here. Our council is very unique compared to the other councils that I'm quite familiar with in the area. Our council can disagree, our committees disagree, we discuss subjects over and over and over again. When we come to a final decision and the vote is taken, the vote is final, that's the end of the discussion, and we move on. Alderman Stolars and I used to tangle quite often, but Alderman Stolars and I were always willing to go out and have a drink after. And I think that's what's made Batavia City superior to any other community in the area. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next alderman in seniority is Alderman James Volk. And Jim, according to our plaque here, you've got nineteen years on the city council.
One month short.
What, one?
One month short.
One month short of nineteen years?
Yep.
Well, we got it by year, I don't have it by month.
Accurate.
But what I want to say about Alderman Volk is, is that he brought with him a very, I think, new and modernistic view to the city council on several fronts, and certainly one of the things that I think is his lasting legacy in our community is the expansion of the Batavia Sidewalk Program. And if you remember back when, again, going back thirty years, we had a lot of sidewalk in Batavia that virtually went no place, and was, had been built by some developer at some point in time, but it didn't connect to anything, it didn't hook onto anything. And one of the real groups of folks that had been shortcutted is many of the older parts of the community, and the older parts of Batavia before we had the desire to build sidewalks in our town, a lot of the older streets and the older neighborhoods never got sidewalk installed. And what was quickly pointed out to us by Alderman Volk when he arrived on the scene was, is that many of the sidewalk voids were in very close proximity to many of the elementary schools that we had in the Batavia community. And so one of the first things that Alderman Volk began to promote was the idea that the city should budget an exact, and different, some amount of money every year to begin to expand and improve the sidewalk network. And so that was begun, and then we got into, every alderman and every ward wanted to have a block here or a block there, so we tried to fill that. But one of the focuses we tried to take was to connect all the areas where we went down to elementary schools with sidewalk. And I can tell you today that, you know, there's now a sidewalk running down Carlisle Road, there's sidewalks up on the northeast side around old, or New Louise White School that weren't there previously, there's some new sidewalks running to H.C. Storm School, there's new sidewalk running down to G.B. Nelson School, there's sidewalks, and all the older schools in town had a lot of voids that are not, no longer voids, and certainly to Alderman Volk's leadership, that I think was accomplished. Also, Alderman Volk has been a very much of a voice in the utilities committee, and he brings a professional background to him that allowed him to understand many of the kind of scientific issues that surrounded some of this stuff, specifically in the electric utility. And again, Jim, we owe you a debt of gratitude for your vision and your ideas of what we could do to enhance the electric and the water system in our community, and we've taken advantage of your scientific aptitude to a great degree, and the citizens of Batavia are very, very, I think, appreciative, and we're beneficial because of your good efforts. You want to make some comments?
Thank you, your honor. It has been an interesting and educational eighteen years. I've learned many things about government, police, fire, the electric industry, water, wastewater, and people. I do think everyone at some point in time should participate in government at some level. Eldon, it's been great sitting next to you for the past eighteen years. We've agreed, we've disagreed, but we've always remained friends. Nineteen years ago, when I was appointed to the council, Mayor Shelkey, at that time, seemed somewhat concerned about getting a physicist on the council. After swearing me in, he did pass on a very good piece of advice that I want to pass on to all aldermen, both continuing and new. The mayor said, "We make our speeches, we take our votes, that settles it. At the end of the meeting, we walk out friends." I hope that all members of the council remember that. Don't form factions or parties. Do what you believe is best for Batavia, and it'll all come out right in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next seniority person is Alderman Bob Leva. And Bob has been with us for two terms, and has done, I think, brought a lot of insight to the city of Batavia. Certainly, he has, you know, stepped forward and offered some great ideas on certain things. He's had a passionate belief in what his ideas are for downtown Batavia and restoring historical things in our community. He's had a particular, also, interest in the environment, in trying to seek to make things more environmentally sensitive and friendly, and he has worked very, very hard to express his ideas for where he thinks Batavia should go in the future. So Bob brings with him a lot of vision. Also, Bob, I think, holds, you know, the community very, very near and dear to his heart, and his dad served for many years as a member of the Chicago Fire Department, and so when we had a vacancy on the tri-city ambulance board, Bob was ready to step forward and take that position. And so he has served with me, is, he and I are Batavia's two representatives on the tri-city ambulance board, and I will tell you that he brings to that, has brought to that position, a lot of insights and understandings and innovative ideas as to how you run an ambulance service not only in one town, but basically in two other communities, plus three or two other fire protection districts in the surrounding township. And so it's been, you know, an interesting run with Bob to see him work with others. He's worked very closely with some of our neighboring communities, and Bob, I just on behalf of the people, want to thank you for your good service to the people of Batavia, because you, like everybody else here, has made a true difference. Want to make some comments?
Well, thank you, your honor. Also like to thank staff for the excellent job they've done during my term. Also, thank all the aldermen that I've worked with over the eight years. I opened up my tax bill on Saturday, and I compared it line item to line item to all the other taxing bodies, and we all deserve a pat on the back. We were the only taxing body to reduce the tax liability to our citizens. So I would hope that this is how we're going to be measured moving forward, and we'll continue to take a leadership role in our concern for the tax of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next alderman in seniority is Victor Dietz, and you are leaving us with eight years. And I want to say that, as already been mentioned, Alderman Dietz brings a very strong perspective to our city council, because many times, he has been kind of the conservative voice. And when he ascended to the chairmanship of the Government Services Committee, I welcomed that movement, because I thought he would be a watchful eye on the spending of taxpayer dollars, and I think he certainly rose to that occasion and served that position very, very admirably. He also has been one who has sought repeatedly to speak up for the underdog when he's seen a citizen who he feels, you know, wasn't getting the best voice, or needed, you know, somebody else to be his cheerleader, and specifically, some of the folks who had kind of minor issues, that he would come down and try to work it out either through the staff level, or if he had to, through the city council. And we recently had a seven-to-seven vote on the city council over such an issue as a driveway placement, and I ended up having to break the tie, which I was pleased to do, in favor of allowing the driveway to go in the direction that Alderman Dietz had hoped to promote it. And so I know he worked very diligently on an issue like that, and he has been an underdog, spokesman for the underdog, and been one who has worked very, very tirelessly to make sure that everybody in Batavia has a voice. Also, I want to make note that he's been a real strong proponent of helping the servicemen in our community who have been away serving, and I know he has members of his own family who are in that position, but certainly, I, after his continued emphasis on it, I've always, in the opening invocation, always tried to remember a blessing for our servicemen and women who are serving on foreign soil in defense of our liberties, because I know in the back of my head, I've got Alderman Dietz's voice there pointing out to me on a number of occasions, many of the sacrifices and the contributions that many of those folks and their families have to make so that they can service in that area. So Vic, thank you for all the insights and perspectives that you've brought to this council. I think you certainly, again, walk away from here with your head held very high for the great efforts you've made to speak out on behalf of the things that you felt strongly about. Do you want to make some comments?
Thank you, your honor. I want to thank the people of the second ward. I do remember that eight years ago, they had a choice, there was another candidate, and one of the local newspapers had endorsed the other guy. That is not lost in my memory, and I appreciate their willingness to take a flyer on me. I want to thank the people of Batavia, all the people. I would like the new folks to understand that even though we are elected by ward, we serve at large. I can think of only two or three issues in the last eight years where the respective aldermen have had to say, "This is important to my ward." Otherwise, we serve as one body. And don't be surprised if half of the phone calls you get start with the phrase, "I'm not really in your ward, but..." Take that as a great compliment. I appreciate those who have taken the time to extend kindnesses to me on this, my retirement. I've had written correspondence, emails, phone calls, personal greetings, and I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the people in the grocery store who come up and tell me what they think, often starting with, "You're one of those aldermen, aren't you?" I remember with great tenderness, walking into the library, and this sweet little couple came up to me and looked at me and sort of measured me up and down and said, "You're that new alderman, aren't you?" "Yes, ma'am, I am." And we walked several paces on, and they finally said, "We're Dave Brown's parents." No acknowledgement that this was the former mayor, no acknowledgement that this fellow is the one who pioneered downtown development, just, "We're Dave Brown's parents." I took it as a compliment. Near the end of my term, I was out at a fine local retail store, and this woman was up by the counter and was a little confused. I asked if I could help with something, and she said, "You're one of the aldermen, aren't you?" Turned out it was Mrs. Brown. So I got promoted from that new alderman to one of the aldermen. And I am pleased to be one of the aldermen. I want to echo our senior members, especially to the newcomers, that we serve in collegiality, and it's okay to go hammer and tongs here on the floor, but we leave as friends. And on behalf of the current council and previous council, I charge the newcomers to accept and continue and contribute to that tradition. That is what makes this service so doable. And so saying, I want to thank the council for your collegiality toward me, particularly since I am so often the underdog in the minority position. I do believe that you are my friends, and have had the privilege of socializing with many of you, and I appreciate that very much. I'd like to acknowledge the mayor for his mentoring, for his history lessons, and I did want to mention the invocation that we have at the beginning of every meeting. Not every council has the guts to do that. In the state of Illinois, I appreciate the fact that we do. And of course, the mention of the military is very near to my heart, and I appreciate the fact that that is in every invocation. I did not realize that I was connected to that, I thought it came first. Couple weeks ago, I had a chance to visit my son's home out in Virginia. I would like to report to you, council members, that the proclamation that you issued to him upon his return from the Persian Gulf hangs proudly in the front room of their house. I want to acknowledge Roger Brysh as the moral compass of the community, thank him for his important leadership in that regard. I want to acknowledge Alderman Sparks. About seven years ago, or seven and a half years ago, we bought a fire truck. It came in two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars over budget. I went ballistic. I wanted to buy the one that was a hundred-thousand dollars cheaper. We settled on one that was fifty-thousand dollars cheaper. One day, I was over at Garen's office, and I was whining and barking about fifty thousand that I didn't get saved. Garen listened to me very patiently, and then said something along the lines of, "You know, Vic, you can fuss about the fifty you didn't save, or you can be proud of the fifty you did save. It's up to you." Garen, thank you for that lesson. I have tried to apply that in many areas of my life. So I'm happy to take part in these seventy-four years of collective service that we honor tonight, and express appreciation to all for the privilege of so doing. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Next in seniority is Alderman Dawn Tanuda, and Dawn has, I think, brought a new and fresh vision with her to her office in Batavia. She is one who likes to stick her ground and express her opinions and hold them and try to influence others, and I think she's been very successful in doing it. But certainly, the downtown streetscape program is, I think, something that you should walk out of here feeling very good about, because you've had a major role in helping to, number one, sell the idea to the community once it was kind of expressed to us by a number of people, that improving downtown Batavia was a vision that was not only held by the city council, but by many thousands of other citizens. And you adopted that whole idea with a great degree of passion and interest and tenacity, and you have expressed yourself many times. You and I have had disagreements about things in that arena, and I know some of the other members of the council have, but at the end of the day, I think a lot of what you have promoted and sought to include in that project has been successful. And so downtown Batavia has got, you know, we're still doing it, it's got a ways to go, but I hope as you look at Batavia in the years ahead, that you take a lot of pride and honor that you helped, had a lot, major role in helping us make that. You also have a very big heart about you, and I know from personal experience that many times, you've told me or commented to me about, you know, things you'd heard about in the community, or people that were having businesses, or people that were having a hard time, and what we as a city council could do. So it was, it was great to have somebody on the city council who kind of had a real down-to-earth heart and soul about themselves, and really was trying to look out for the other person and help the underdog again, and trying to understand what people were going through. And you've been, I think, a conscience to the senate, to the city council, and sent forth, I think, a great perspective to us on several meetings about, you know, what we should be thinking about in a bigger picture type of thing. So I thank you for your thinking, and for your sharing, and for your willingness to speak out on issues that you felt passionately about. And because of that, again, you should leave here feeling very proud about what's been accomplished. I know we got a ways to go, but you put us on the road, and hopefully, in the days ahead, in the not-too-distant future, we will finish that, and downtown Batavia will become the great vision that you and several others here held so strongly for it. So Dawn, thank you on behalf of the people of Batavia for a great four years of service, and would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, your honor, thank you very much. Thank you, council, thank you, staff. I want to thank my family, my husband, Emilio, my children, Evan, Rachel, and Emilio, for their continuous encouragement and understanding and support of my commitment to my role as alderman. It is due to my family's belief in the value that one person can make a difference, I took on this role four years ago. I'm encouraged by the change and the momentum I have created while being a part of our municipal government. The council strategic plan is in the forefront of the council's priorities and annual budget. This plan is a tool that communicates the vision of our community and this council. The plan sets priorities and directions for staff. It encourages the council to be proactive, not reactive, especially when we are faced with economic development and community development issues. I'm encouraged by the momentum the streetscape framework project has created in our downtown. I am proud to have been a part of this economic and downtown revitalization process, and I want to thank Dave and Mike for your support during that, and also staff during that process. Finally, I am encouraged to see more individuals who believe that they can make a difference in our community. I am hopeful that the council's communication of a strategic plan and ongoing support for economic and community development will continue to be a priority for the council and keep the momentum moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last, but not certainly not least, I want to pay some words of tribute to Janet Jungles. Janet came to the Batavia City Council on a very sad moment. She sits in the seat that had been occupied by Alderman Linnea Miller, and Alderman Linnea Miller had been a very strong and respected voice on this group for a number of years when she was taken away by cancer. And it was a real blow to the city council and myself to have that event happen, and it was, you know, one of those situations where you kind of pick up the pieces and try to go forward. And so we put the clarion call out to the community, and we had several people apply, and we went through the interview process, and at the end of the day, as we always do, the, all the other members of the city council got the vote on who would be selected to fill the shoes of Alderman Miller, and Janet was selected. And then subsequently, she ran for a two-year term in that office, and so she's completing about three and a half years, I guess it is, because Alderman Miller didn't make it through her first year of her last term before she died. has been a very strong and steady voice representing the residents of the Third Ward. She has done her homework. She always came to committee meetings, and she always knew, if she asked a question, she always knew the right question to ask and was one who, you could tell, had certainly studied the issues and understood where things should or should not be going. She's also been a person that's tried to extend her interests beyond the city council and other city issues, and specifically, she's been a big fan and a big worker and promoter of the Batavia Fireworks Program. And Janet, I hope that's a commitment that she'll keep going to help us with that in the days ahead, because the fireworks committee, I think, really welcomes and relishes your commitments to that particular organization. But you really have, I think, risen to the occasion and really filled the shoes, and if Linnea Miller were here tonight, I think she would join with me in saying that we'd be very proud of the job you've done in her behalf. And so we thank you for stepping forward at a time of very great trouble to us with her loss, and you've ably filled the shoes and, I think, well-represented the residents of the Third Ward. And so we wish you and all the other members of the city council who are leaving tonight just the very best in the days ahead, and we hope you, none of you are strangers, and you feel welcome to come back here at any time and check in a meeting and sit down and talk or share and stay around afterwards and tell us what we did right and what we did wrong and so that we can continue to move the community forward. But I would just say collectively for all of you, each and every one of you has really added your own two cents to this whole city government picture, and truly, Batavia is a much richer and better and grander and greater city because of the service of all six of you. So if you'll just stay seated for just a couple more minutes.
Your Honor.
Yes. Oh, yeah, I mean, Janet, I'm sorry.
I know I'm quiet and all, but...
Yeah, you need to, you need to speak too. Sorry.
As I sit here and reflect on the past three years that I've held the seat as Third Ward Alderman, I can honestly say that I have learned a great deal and have a greater appreciation for the staff, my fellow aldermen, and how a city is run and managed than I could have ever imagined. I am grateful I had this opportunity, have served the community, and proud that I have been a part of so many countless changes, to name just a few. The annexation of the Musa property, the tear-down rebuild of McDonald's, finally putting to rest the second bridge location, if there will ever be one, launching the crime-free housing program, and the major change that I have been privileged to be part of is the start of the ongoing Streetscape projects that started and will continue for many years to come. Being part of all this and attending endless meetings, I have to say, though, my favorite part of holding this position, one resident would contact me directly, whether they were having a problem with a barking dog, a neighbor sumpump backing into their yards, not wanting chickens in their backyard, their basement in danger of flooding because of heavy rainfalls, or just reaching out to me personally and sharing their views on the decisions we, as aldermen, were making. While we may not have always seen eye to eye, it was encouraging to know that they did reach out to me and would at least listen to the reasons why we were making the decisions that we were here in city council and understanding our views. I found listening to what they had to say helped me to formulate my vote on issues that were in front of me. That all being said, I would especially like to thank the residents of the Third Ward for allowing me to represent them for the last three years. I would encourage everyone in the city to please reach out to your aldermen and have conversations with them. They are here to represent you, and they want and need to hear your voices. This will help to improve and continue to help Batavia grow and evolve into a community where we can all be proud to call home.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman Freindal, I need to have you make one last motion for adjournment. And then after we adjourn, we're going to take about a five-minute recess because we're honored to have Judge Kevin Bush with us. He's got his robe with him. He's got to put it on, and then we're going to seat the new members of the city council and get everybody ready for the swearing-in. So we'll take about a five-minute recess.
I move the Batavia City Council adjourn. Second.
Motion and second. The clerk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Before we convene the new city council, I just want to make a couple of announcements. I guess the way we'll do this is, is that I'll ask, starting with the First Ward, we'll ask each of the new aldermen who's been elected to come out into the center of the group, of the seats here, and we'll, Judge Bush will join me here, and we'll do the actual swearing-in of the aldermen on an individual basis. As we traditionally do, I would certainly like to invite the new aldermen to bring with them any members of their family that they might care to be with them when we do the oath of office, and we got the TV camera rolling here, and if anybody else wants to take pictures, they'll be able to do so on an individual basis. Also, we'd like to extend an invitation to everybody. After the meeting, we've got cake and coffee and punch over here in the corner that we'd like to serve and share a moment of appreciation for those who have served and a moment of congratulations to those who have just been sworn in. So if you'll bear with us as we do that, and I anticipate that the meeting that will follow the swearing-in will be relatively short, and so that we'll be able to move forward rather quickly to the end of the meeting. So at, this time, I will convene the new Batavia City Council into session, and I'd like to ask Judge Kevin Bush of the Kane County Circuit Court if he would join me in the center of the aisle here. Ward.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael O'Brien.
Having been elected to the office of First Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of First Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of First Ward Alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of First Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, then moving to Third Ward, Kyle Holman.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Martin J. Callahan.
Aye, Martin J. Callahan.
Having been elected to the office of Second Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Second Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Second Ward Alderman.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Second Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, then moving to Third Ward, Kyle Holman.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Holman.
Having been elected to the office of Third Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Third Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Third Ward Alderman.
The duties of the office of Third Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jamie Sam.
Having been elected to the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
Of the office of Fourth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Steve Vassillion, Fifth Ward Alderman.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Stephen James Vassillion.
Having been elected to the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
Of the office of Fifth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Nick Serone, Sixth Ward Alderman.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nicholas Serone.
Having been elected to the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
Of the office of Sixth Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And Drew McFadden, Seventh Ward Alderman.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Drew McFadden.
Having been elected to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to ask City Treasurer Jerry Miller if he would come forth. And while he's coming up here, I'd like to share with you, everybody, that this truly is the longest elected, living city official in the history of the city of Batavia, because you're beginning, is this your 12th term? I believe so. Yeah, he's...
I've been here 40 years.
Forty years, yeah, there's going to be 44 years at the end of this term.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gerald R. Miller.
Having been elected to the office of City Treasurer.
Having been elected to the office of City Treasurer.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Treasurer.
Of the office of City Treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you and congratulations.
Next, we have Heidi Wetzel, our city clerk.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Heidi Wetzel.
Having been elected to the office of City Clerk.
Having been elected to the office of City Clerk.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of City Clerk.
Of the office of City Clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I have to ask Alderman Brown to come up and hold the mic.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jeffrey D. Shelkey.
Having been elected to the office of Mayor.
Having been elected to the office of Mayor.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Mayor.
Of the office of Mayor.
Of the city, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he'll take care of that. If you feel like it, yeah. That's great.
I'd really like to publicly thank Judge Kevin Bush for coming down and overseeing our swearing-in tonight. It's always good to have a member of the judicial circuit here to do this for us and. We can claim Judge Bush is one of our very own. He is a Batavia resident and we're very honored to have him as a citizen and we thank you for your good efforts on the bench and also your good efforts as a citizen of our town, so thank you, Judge. Thank you. Okay, we will call this meeting to order and I'd ask the City Clerk to please call the role of the new City Council.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vasiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that all 14 elected members of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Uh, moving then to, uh, our, uh, item number four, which is Ordinance 13 dash 27. Amend the municipal code, uh, reference construction activity hours and, uh, Alderman Wolf, do you have this one in the moment?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Ordinance 13 27. Um, basically this is, uh, to change the ability of the City Council to change the restrictions on times for construction. Um, due to the fact that Wilson Street is our one and only thoroughfare across the river. Um, we would like to be able to do, uh, construction in the evening on this project and this allows the City Council to be able to, uh, change the hours that we have available. Um, and basically it'd be Monday through Saturday, um, between 7:00 PM and 9:00 AM. Um, and then on 8:00 PM to 9:00 AM on Sundays, I think. Or 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sundays, if I got that right. That's it. Any questions? Anybody? I make the motion, um, that we approve Ordinance 13 dash 27 code provisions for permitted hours of construction.
Second.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of Ordinance 13 dash 27. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Call the roll.
Oh, Alderman Brown.
I just want to make a comment that I think it's important to note that the reason why this is being done is to accommodate our citizens, um, as Alderman Wolf just explained with this being the major thoroughfare through town, that, uh, staff is recommending that, uh, the contractor work at night in order to alleviate and, and cut down as much of the, uh, traffic congestion as possible and, and the road closures and what have you. So, I think it's a great idea and I'm, I'm real happy that staff is making this recommendation.
I agree. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Okay. Got that out of the way. Moving to item number five, which is the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath, do you have anything this evening?
Thanks, Mayor. Got several, uh, things. On behalf of the staff and myself, we did want to thank, uh, the outgoing members of the City Council. Uh, we appreciate their honesty and integrity and their dedication to this, uh, uh, community. And, um, you've, uh, really allowed the career staff to, um, do their jobs, uh, and be able to do it, uh, knowing they were advancing, uh, um, the quality of life here in the community. Um, we also, the staff, uh, we want to thank the incoming people. Um, we appreciate the fact that you've taken the, uh, this huge leap, uh, making a commitment for both you and your family and I can tell you that the staff will do whatever we can, uh, to try and, uh, help you, uh, with your vision. We'll try to, um, implement your vision on behalf of the, uh, of the, uh, community. Um, in the next, uh, in the next week, we will start the impossible task of trying to figure out a retreat date where all 15 or 16 people plus the department heads can be available for a Friday night and most of us Saturday to engage in a retreat. So, we'll be sending out a survey. We're hoping to do that sometime in the latter half of June or the first half of July. I know there's been a lot of conversation about the Plaza next door here. Uh, the Park District is retaining a landscape architect. Uh, there are some complex difficulties in installing plantings because there's so much limestone under the, uh, uh, surface here, but they will be planting ornamental glass- gla- grasses, pardon me, as well as, uh, many colored perennials and you'll see a radical change, or we've been told we'll see a radical change before the, uh, beginning of events in June this, uh, summer. Uh, we'll be, again, for the new, uh, City Council members, we'll be arranging, uh, your photographs for our webpage. We'll start scheduling orientations meetings this week as well. Chief Randy Deike, uh, and the Fire Department have been working with the, uh, the body that issues, uh, fire ratings for municipalities. And without going into the details of it, the community gets a rating, uh, which is based on their, on fire flows, which are, you know, the pressure of the water that comes, uh, out of our hydrants so that we can fight fires adequately. Our ability to receive and handle fire alarms and so that includes our dispatch system. Uh, the Fire Department itself, their equipment, their staffing and where our, our fire stations are located. And our water supply, uh, which includes the condition and maintenance of our hydrants, alternative water sources and our water storage. And I'm pleased to say that after, uh, an examination of the city, uh, we had been, uh, rated, uh, three. Uh, 10 is the lowest level, number one is the highest level. We've been, uh, rated, uh, three for several years and now we've moved up to a, a two, which is really a great thing. And while this may not, uh, result in insurance, um, premium, uh, savings for the residential areas, this could absolutely be something, uh, important to the commercial and industrial, uh, segment of the community. So, we'll be putting out that information. It's not effective until August, um, but it is good news and it's, uh, a really compliment to the Fire Department and, uh, Public Works that maintains our water supply. Um, I've passed out a conceptual, uh, committee of the whole schedule just so people could have an idea of the way we were thinking. I'm not going to go through it. The Mayor has told me he would like you to, or like to facilitate a discussion with you next Monday evening. Uh, we've tried to just show, um, a, a lineup for the next couple of months. Um, it, it looks pretty crowded, but some of it is taken up with the fact that we are going to have some, some, uh, conversations, uh, kind of a primer over certain major, uh, projects that we're working on or going to be working on in the next couple of years. We'd love to see, uh, uh, love to hear comments and, uh, however, whatever process this body needs to make its decisions, uh, we will support and try and help you with. But, um, there'd been a lot of discussion at the Mayor's suggestion. We've been trying to work this out to, uh, and listening to what some of you have said in committee meetings and tried to look ahead. Because we, as you'll see, we have a lot on our plates, so. I visited, uh, Prairie State, the Prairie State campus last week with, uh, Jamie and, uh, Eldon Freidendahl and Gary Holm. Uh, there was a meeting of all the owners of, uh, the Prairie State project. I can report to you that is a, um, it's a very impressive project. Um, it's, uh, running very smoothly. It's running beyond its, uh, uh, conceptual capacity. It's, uh, has a higher rate of efficiency than they first, uh, planned it. It's, uh, putting out less emissions than their EPA permit allows them to do. And, um, there was kind of a, uh, I had mixed, mixed feelings because, uh, the issue of our ownership of Prairie State is something that we really need to be working on because it's, um, something because of the, uh, price of electricity out there in the, the, uh, market, uh, has had a negative impact on us. But putting that aside for the moment, we are working on it. I think that, and Alderman Stark. How could I forget the person who made the chocolate chip cookies for the ride? Um, it, it is truly an impressive project. I, I mean, uh, you know, 4,000 people, uh, building this incredible project. Um, it is one of the, uh, uh, cleanest coal plants in the entire country. Uh, the location of the plant immediately, uh, above the coal mine of Waynes, the pollution controlled by, uh, railroads and barges, which typically bring coal from the far west, uh, of the country and over rivers to get to power plants. There's over $1 billion in environmental, uh, controls, uh, in this plant, which is, uh, actually is the most, has the most complete set of environmental controls of any plant or coal plant in the country. Um, I was pleased to tell you that Eldon Freidendahl was recognized as a longtime supporter of public power there. There was about 250 people there from all over the Midwest and that was, uh, uh, it was a nice visit. And, and I can report to you, we're continuing to work on our, our financial part of that Prairie State ownership and we'll have more to report to you, I think, by next, next Monday. Uh, I wanted to remind you and the community that cocktails on Clark, uh, because of the, uh, water on Clark Island has been moved to the area of the Riverwalk immediately east of City Hall and that will be on Saturday evening, May 18th. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, all the police and the Public Works employees who worked yesterday at the Loyalty Day Parade. And, uh, you know, them leaving their families, uh, to do this really enables just a large part of the community to, um, show their passion for all the activities that they, uh, are involved in in their lives. It's just wonderful watching all the kids and adults who do all these things as well as making it easy for many of the people to watch the parade and, uh, and of course for all of us to honor the, uh, uh, the people, the past and present members of the armed services. And I think that's all I have.
And just to pick up on what Bill said, we want to call a special committee of the whole meeting for next Monday night. And one of the things I'd like to do in that time is kind of organize the, the committee system for the City Council. And what I'm advocating is that while we will meet as the committee of the whole, I still want to maintain the four standing committees of the City Council that we've had for a number of years. And so what, how that has traditionally worked is, is that we have one Alderman from each ward on each of the, the committees. So, there are four of them, so each Alderman serves on two committees. So, I'm asking if each one of the two Aldermen from each ward will get together and have a conversation with your, between your fellow Aldermen from your ward and you, you two give me your recommendation of what committees you two are, are going to serve on. Which two of the committee is going to be on public utilities and who's going to be on community development and governmental services and city services and we'll then at that point in time, next Monday night, we'll put the list together. And then during the committee of the whole meeting, we will kind of have the committee meetings take place during that session and the seven who are on the committee will be the ones there making the vote while the other seven sit there and wa- listen to the conversation. We think this will be very helpful for, as a kind of a teaching tool for the new members of the council to kind of grab on to what's being discussed in an open forum. And, you know, some places have got away totally with, done away totally with the individual committees, but I would like to keep it here for a while because I think it works and we'll see how it unfolds as the committee of the whole system takes place. But for the moment, we'll have a committee chairman and each of the four committees will stand in place and do the job they continue to do. So, just make a decision between your, your fellow Aldermen from your ward as to which two committees each of you is going to take so that we have the list ready by next Monday night. So, if somebody can get that to me, we'll hopefully have a published list ready to get, to circulate next Monday night. And so I thank you all for your understanding about that because we've had quite a bit of debate and discussion internally amongst the staff about this and I guess my position won out. And so we're going to go forth and do it this way for a while. So, anything else, Bill? Any questions as a City Administrator? Thank you. Okay, going to other business, I, I was trying to figure out a place on the agenda we could do this. One of the things we normally do when we have new Aldermen take place or take the oath is we invite you, if you'd like to make any comments about your experience being elected or thank somebody or do anything with it. Alderman Brian, would you like to make any comments about being sworn in for another term?
Well, uh, I guess I would thank my wife first. I mean, I'm gone two or three nights a week, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, I'm kind of locked in my office reading, so she doesn't get to see me too much. Uh, I would thank the residents of the First Ward for entrusting me for another four years. And I would definitely thank all the citizens of, uh, of our city for, for having a lot of confidence in the council to keep us moving forward with, you know, we, we did the Streetscape on River Street. Now we're doing Wilson Street and, uh, you know, we are trying to move our, our downtown forward and, and, and revitalize it and, and start bringing more, uh, activity to it. And, uh, you know, the, the support of the city is, is important for that to happen. Uh, and lastly, I would, I would want to thank staff. I think staff does an excellent job. They're, they're always, for me, they're always there. I, I have questions and they're there to answer them. So, uh, it'll be another fun four years.
Alderman Callahan?
I would also like to thank my wife and my family and the citizens in Ward Two. And if, yes, Alderman Dietz is still here. He had always told me while I was preparing for this that he was serving this seat as Chuck Beckman's seat. And he got off easy because now I have to live up to Chuck Beckman and Victor Dietz. And while I was also preparing for it, I would watch the City Council meetings on BA TV and I truly enjoyed his thoughtfulness, his rationalness and his calmness and above all, his eloquency, if that's even a word. But I'm sure he would fill me in. So, I would like to thank him for his service.
Alderman Holman?
I, I as well would like to just thank my family and friends for the support and encouragement, uh, through this process. And, um, the citizens of the, uh, the Third Ward and again, um, thanks to Alderman Jungles for her support. And, uh, it's, uh, it's kind of special sitting here and, and taking the seat of, uh, of Linnea Miller and, and I too hope that I don't let her down, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank my family first and foremost. My boys for behaving as best as they can through all of this. And my husband for being there, um, and all my family and friends. And all of the people in the Fourth Ward that did come out and vote and have voted in the past and have voted in the council that was and the councils that will be. Um, and just the community getting out and speaking out and getting involved, I think it's great. You know, today we got sworn in, but I really am thankful for even the community members who have contacted me in the past couple of weeks already, um, and are showing their interest and, you know, that they feel they can confide in me their opinions and thoughts and, you know, views and I'm sure many, many more will come and I really look forward to it.
I, of course, want to thank my wife Laura for her support and for those who, uh, supported and encouraged and advised me through the campaign. Uh, your help was, was immensely valuable. Um, looking forward to the next four years. I'm humbled and awed, uh, to be in this position. I don't have 32 minutes of experience, let alone 32 years, so, thank you.
I will too thank my family and, uh, my campaign team that helped get me elected, but most importantly, the, the residents of Ward Six that have entrusted in me this, this position. Uh, and I'd like to also thank you guys in advance, the existing council for your patience and understanding as I ramp up a, a steep learning curve here, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Obviously, my family for giving me the, their blessing to pursue this endeavor and understanding the, the time and commitment that it's going to take. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody else who's, uh, provided support and encouragement, especially outgoing Alderman Tinuda who, uh, patiently took my phone calls and answered my questions and was more than generous with her time in telling me what I was getting into and helping me get up to speed. I'd also like to thank the current seated Alderman, uh, for everybody who's reached out and given me a warm welcome, uh, as well as staff who's reached out and introduced themselves and been very welcoming. So, thank you and I'm very much looking forward to working with you all.
Mr. Miller, do you want to say, make any comments? Man of long terms and few words. City Clerk, want to make any comments?
Well, I'm back. No, about four and a half years ago, my neighbor walked over and said to me, "You have a degree in government and you should put it to you." So, I did. And I thank you, Vic Dietz, for asking me to serve. Four years ago, when I was first taking my seat, I asked for patience as I learned the job of City Clerk. I received not only patience, but also a kindness and grace and desire to work together, which has made me very proud of our city government and very grateful to be a part of it. The job has been interesting and a constant learning process, um, therefore I still need to ask for patience. As to this day, I still receive bits of paperwork. I have no idea what to do. I have no idea what to deal with. Fortunately, our staff does and they're always willing to assist. Thank you all so very much.
And I guess unlike everybody else, I'd like to thank my wife Linda for her understanding in this whole adventure that I've been involved with for as long as we've been married. Last year, I not only do this mayor's thing, but I, most of this side of the room are aware, I have several regional roles I play in government. So last year, I was looking at my calendar this morning and I was at 272 night meetings last year. So if you really want to give the time to it, there's plenty of things we can find for you to do here. That being said, I think Batavia is on the cusp of some very exciting days ahead. This year marks our 180th birthday as a community in Illinois. We are one of the oldest cities in the state of Illinois and we have some of the richest history that hopefully we're beginning to accentuate and appreciate and illustrate. But beyond that, we're just, I think, in maybe the proverbial right place at the right time. We've got a lot of nice things going for us. We just heard our ISO fire protection rate rating has been lowered to the best it's ever been. Our crime rate in comparison to many other communities in the area is relatively low and we have, you know, some great community amenities, whether it's our public school system or our public library. We have, I think, a city staff that's second to none as far as their commitment and dedication and understanding as to what's going on. And so we really are, I feel, in an enviable position and that we really do have the opportunity here in the days ahead to really make Batavia do some stuff that really makes us stand out and shine. And, you know, the thing I guess we have to watch out for is that we don't become victims of our own success. And I say that from the perspective that suddenly you have so many people wanting to move in here. Of course, we don't have any houses for them to move into, but, you know, we have a lot of people knocking on the doorstep, asking a lot of interesting questions about trying to live in Batavia or finding a house to be here. And so I know a lot of other communities look at us with some degree of envy because we've got a lot of positive things going. And while we do have our moments and we do have the issues that are debated and people question and whatever, we as a community, I think, can always hold our head very high that we conduct our business in a high degree of integrity and respect. And as was said many times by the departing alderman tonight, and hopefully this is the best lesson that we can depart, as we progress in business, you know, we may have a very furious discussion and debate and it may be divided and seven of you may go one way and seven the other and I get the chance then to break the decision. But when that's over and done with, it's over. And that's the way this has been the culture of this city council for years and probably one of the secrets to our success is that we understand that when we make the decision, there's going to be plenty of other things that we're going to have to have that guy or gal who just voted the other way from us on our side. So we need to maintain the relationships. We don't fragment and go into different directions. And I've heard from other mayors that have city councils that three over in one corner of the room will never vote if the other three on the other side of the room vote a different way. So we fortunately have never had that and I will certainly continue to work hard that we don't attain that. But I just feel appreciative tonight as those who are leaving spoke so fondly of the culture that has existed in this organization for so long. And as I say, we're truly blessed by the citizens we have and the staff that we have at our disposal. And if we can just continue to funnel our energies and our integrity to take advantage of that, I think we're going to achieve some very monumental, great things for the people of Batavia in the days ahead. So, that being said, we'll move to committee reports and since we really don't have committees at the moment because we haven't organized them, but I'll recognize the chairman in case you have anything you want to throw on the agenda for the next. Alderman Brown on the Community Development?
I do, Your Honor. I want to make mention of what we have on the agenda. But first, before I do that, I want to just make a comment. Listening to the comments that the new aldermen have made and the comments that the outgoing aldermen have made, made me think of someone that if you don't know him now, you will soon get to know him. His name is Roy Bailey. He will show up here right about Thanksgiving time and he'll start talking about the toy drive. It wasn't too long ago Roy Bailey stood up here and made the comment, "Once a Batavian, always a Batavian." And the comments that I heard from you people tonight and the outgoing alderman just confirms what Roy said, "Once a Batavian, always a Batavian." And it makes me proud to be a Batavian. So I just want to thank all of you for your interest and look forward to spending many nights with you, working away until maybe midnight according to these agendas, and look forward to it. On our agendas coming up, Historic Preservation is meeting on Monday, May 13th at 5:30. There's nothing on the schedule, but there is one item on their agenda. O'Brien's is going to be coming in for a facade improvement grant. So since they are in a historic district, they do need to go to the Historic Preservation for that before they come on to CDC. So that'll be on the agenda for May 13th at 5:30. Community Developments, we've got the Housing Study Agreement coming up. Tiff Finances, discussion on that along with the discussion on the Baptist Church and Houston Street. We've got the continued discussion and hopefully a resolution on the granite on River Street. There's some granite issues over there, which we'll bring to committee and have the discussion on so the committee can make a recommendation to the council is what we're going to do moving forward with that. And then the Tomley Building, which is the first building on the east side of the river on the south side of Wilson Street, is owned by the city of Batavia and we put it out for a request for a proposal. And we're wishing to sell that piece of property and get it back into the hands of somebody that's going to pay real estate taxes and bring some development into town. So we'll be hearing what staff is recommending on that. And then also, we've got Harris's, which is the building where O'Solemeo just located and Paljoys is in, which is going to be coming in for a downtown improvement grant of $7,000. So we'll be reviewing that. And that's all we have for that night. On May 21st, we're going to have comprehensive plan discussion, tattoo parlor discussion, Tomley final direction hopefully on the Tomley Building. And then the O'Brien facade grant, if it gets done with HPC, will be coming to us on that night also for recommendations to the city council. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
So far, it looks like we just have one item for the 13th of Master Services Agreement. And it looks like we're kind of quiet until the 28th and some Public Utilities stuff starts picking up again. So I'll announce those when we get closer to the end of the month. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wood?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have stuff coming up on May 21st. That would be Dangerous Dogs Ordinance, Cemetery Code Update, and Forestry Code Update. That's all. Thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to welcome all the new aldermen. I look forward to working with you. As it is right now, May 13th, there's a possibility we'll be discussing our ban agreement. If not, it will be carried over to the 21st meeting. We also be discussing a number of electronic meeting attendances. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. We have any other business from the council tonight? Alderman Stark?
We can't go by when I don't talk about the fireworks and especially coming off of the city garage sale and the Loyalty Day Parade. We did have fundraiser going on during the garage sale. We had our own garage sale and raised just over $400. That was all donated items from members of the community and we sold them at the garage sale and were able to keep all the proceeds. And then we also collected money at the Loyalty Day Parade. We had a banner year this year and I'd like to thank the Batavia High School volleyball teams under the direction of Coach Trippy Payne, under the organization of Audrey Fallhaber. The girls all came out and because they were so enthusiastic and so much fun to work with, we raised $1,040, collecting money from citizens, and we really appreciate all those donations. So we are, the press has asked me several times, we are somewhere between 40 and 50% of goal. And our thermometer will be going up soon, so we'll have a visual reminder of where we are towards our goal. But we always are taking donations. You can send your checks to City Hall at any time made out to Batavia Access Fireworks and any businesses, and I can't fail to mention Paljoys. So very nicely printed, a lot of flyers for us. And if you go to Paljoys on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday night through June 30th and buy a large pizza, a $3 donation is made to the fireworks committee. And that's ongoing, of course, through the end of June. And then the second thing that we're working with local restaurants on is a program where on specific dates, and you can go to our website and see the dates, we're working with Chick-fil-A, Bulldogs, Gibby's, East China Inn, Open Range, Limestone, and Aliano's. And a percentage of sales will be donated back to the fireworks on specific days if you print out the flyer and bring it in when you order. And so we really appreciate these fine restaurants for stepping up and helping us with our fundraising. And I think that's all I have, other than we always need more committee volunteers. So if any, oh, and I'd be remiss in not thanking the city of Batavia for letting me use one of their fire trucks and put banners on it and walk alongside it. We give the fire department a hard time and they have been so helpful in both helping to secure permits for fireworks and be part of the parade. And I just want, I would be remiss in not thanking them and the whole city of Batavia for that matter. So, but again, we need more volunteers, so our next meeting is a week from Wednesday night and we'd love to see you there. That's it.
Alderman O'Brien?
I have a couple of items. I'll try to be brief. Just for clarity's sake, are we just precluding the council vote on Committee of the Whole?
We're going to do it after we organize the committee next week.
And then we'll discuss it further because we didn't have that many discussions on it. And so I'd like to, you know, get everyone's input and kind of hammer it out.
Do a Committee of the Whole a little bit different than other people have done it before.
I understand that. I just wanted to make sure if the council was voting on it or not, so I didn't.
It will be.
Okay. I also wanted to recognize what was brought up by yourself, Your Honor, and by Bill, the ISO rating. I, you know, want to, you know, recognize Bill and his staff. I think, you know, your staff does a great job, Bill. And with Chief Deike and his staff, I mean, they made this happen. This is another economic opportunity for us. It's a development tool, you know, to bring insurance companies into our town where they can sell insurance at a lower rate to our industrial users, to our commercial users. It just makes us that much more attractive as a city. And again, with Chief Deike, you know, I think, and his staff, they are very proactive and I would have to think that they're one of the finest departments in northern Illinois. But then I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize John Dillon and his staff in Public Works because now we have a very, you know, state-of-the-art delivery system of our water that also contributed in a collaborative effort towards this ISO rating, as did Tri-Cities and modernizing their equipment. So I just wanted to bring that and speak my mind to that, so I appreciate everyone putting up with that. But I'd be terribly remiss, moving on to my third item, if I did not say thank you and recognize Dawn Tenuta. Dawn and I came on together four years ago and I just want everyone to know that, you know, Dawn decided she was not going to run again and she was tenacious in making every meeting for the streetscapes. It was just above and beyond what we do as council members. And she was tenacious to follow the process and not lose sight of the process to get it done correctly. And, you know, we have, I think, River Street's a beautiful addition to our city through no small effort by Dawn Tenuta. And I just, she's leaving, we've become good friends. I sometimes fly off the handle, I get worked up and Dawn settles me down. So, thank you, Dawn, for all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Clark?
I just want to follow up on the Bike Week. When Joanne talked, I will be sending out an email for the 14th of May for the council ride with citizens when I have more details. I know we're meeting here, but I can give you like the route and how long we'll be gone and helmets are optional, I've been told. But I'll, so you'll be, just be expecting an email if you want to participate when I get more details. Thanks.
Okay, moving to item number eight, Matters in the Public. Anybody this evening? Mr. Davis? Are you coming as the ESDA or are you coming as fireworks chairman? Okay.
I want to thank Susan for covering most of my points for me tonight, even though I only had to take care of the restaurant part. There is one story that I want Alderman Callahan to share with us about Allison Gutz's in school and what they did to help raise money for the fireworks. I also do want to thank the Batavia High School volleyball team. They did a great job. I want to also thank the 180-plus people who paid for the garage sale this week. That was great. Had some bad weather, but it turned out okay at the end. So if you want to go ahead and share that story with us, that'd be great.
Yeah, there was a brother and sister, a first grader and second grader, that were very concerned that we were going to lose the fireworks. So, and apart from buying pins, they decided to approach Dr. Wright at AGS and ask if they could put together a fundraiser. And Dr. Wright agreed. And two weeks ago, they had a class-to-class competition and they raised $700 on their own. And hopefully, that will stimulate some competition between the elementary schools, the junior high, and the senior high. So I do thank them to Deb and Jeff Redbird for Matthew and Rachel.
I also do think that's $800 and then he gives an extra $100.
Yes, and then they had their cousin walk his cul-de-sac because he was so impressed with that and just in his cul-de-sac raised another $100. So $800 directly from them.
So I think they deserve a great deal of gratitude because that's awesome for first and second graders that do that.
Front row seats at the fireworks. I think that's the bonus for these kids if we get school against school.
There's always good seats at the fireworks. They're all front row seats. So I want to thank everybody. We will have fireworks this year, that is for sure. We're, the length of the show might vary a little bit, but we still, like I said, we're counting on everybody to go to these restaurants. Paljoys is doing a tremendous thing for us with this pizza, $3 per pizza for Monday through Wednesday. It's unbelievable. So there's coupons out there. If we have to get some more, we'll get some more. But I think we distributed over 3,000 coupons yesterday during the parade. So hopefully, we're going to get some return on that and we thank them. Alderman Stark does have some, she's going to pass them on to the alderpeople so we can, you guys can all enjoy some pizza too and partake in this. But there are also, like I said, in Neighbor's Magazine, there'll be an ad in there, there's an ad on our website for all the other restaurants and the dates they're holding their fundraisers for us. So I hope everybody in the community will participate. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, on item nine tonight, which is the mayor's report, I'm going to be very brief. I've got, I've got a couple of great stories I could tell about Governor Quinn. Last Friday, I went to Chicago and he did the announcement of Art Van Furniture coming to Illinois. And I'll save those stories for another night because they're not worth me telling right at the moment, but I want, remind me to tell you about my encounter with the governor, the Art Van announcement in Chicago last week. But what I would like to just share is a moment of tribute to the Batavia VFW Post, 1197, and the Women's auxiliary who every year put together the Loyalty Day Parade. And the Loyalty Day Parade has become one of kind of, I just would describe it as one of Batavia's shining moments every year. And every year, it's a little bit different in the renditions and the presentation and the people that show up. And it's always a surprise, but if anything, it is pure American democracy at work and in display and really, I think, shows what the essence of life in this town is all about. And the people that turn out and the people that applaud and cheer and the patriotism that's generated by it, I think, is second to none. And I really wanted to thank them for their continued efforts because it is a yeoman's chore to bear the burden of putting that parade on every year and getting it on the street and they do it and I just want to thank them. You know, there's a couple of things we do in Batavia, whether it's the 4th of July fireworks or the Loyalty Day Parade or the Christmas toy distribution program, there's some things that really make Batavia shine and the continuation of that tradition, I think, is very special and I just wanted to publicly thank on behalf of the community of the VFW for some great work this year in keeping that tradition alive and well. That being said, as all of you know, it's generally my tradition that I call upon the senior alderman on the city council to make the motion to adjourn the city council. So it's always been Alderman Freyendal for many years. Suddenly, that's changed and now the honor falls to Alderman Brown. So Alderman Brown, you get to be the guy that I call upon to end these meetings from here on out.
I choose to follow. I move adjourn the city council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I said second. I guess you didn't remember.
Motion and second. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I invite everybody to stay for cake and coffee. Thank you.